All right, we got everybody here now. Welcome to September meeting, Prescott City Council. Still warm outside. It's fixing to be fall. All right, we need to continue to pray for our chief, Ms. Anne Jordan. Continue to pray for her. Okay, I talked to Mary today, and she definitely needs our prayers. October the 20th, which is the date of our next regular council meeting, she's gonna be having a high-risk, very serious lung surgery. On the lobe of her lung. It's a very serious surgery, so we need to continue to pray for Mary and her family. All right, we're gonna stand and Brother Curry will open with our prayer. We'll call that the pledge of allegiance.
Best part. I tell God, this afternoon we come to you to first say thank you. We realize that everything in this world is not going the way we would have them to be, but we thank God that things are as well as they are. Look, we're praying for our colleagues, we're praying for Mary Godwin. She's moving forward to have this very serious lung condition. I pray, God, that she go through this surgery just fine. She recover just fine. I have every reason to believe you're gonna heal her, because we've seen you heal her before. And Godwin, praying for Chief Jordan.
Yes.
You've been good to her. And we thank you that you brought her through all the things that she's been through.
Yes.
And we don't believe you brought her this far to leave. So we praying for healing in her body in the mighty name of Jesus. There's something about that name Jesus that bring down power from heaven. Bring down healing power. Bring down peace in the middle of our storm. So we praying for healing, we praying for peace for both Anne and Mary. And Godwin, pray for our nation. We need you. Sometimes when it seem like everything's out of control, we learn that God's still in control. So take control, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus. We pray for our community, Lord, that you will protect us and bring us together. Because we realize we always stronger together. And Father, we know you're able to do it. So right now, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask your protection on our children, on our schools, on the staff, on our community. God, we need you to protect us all. So Lord, as we go into this meeting, we pray we go in in fellowship. And the meeting's over, we hope we end in fellowship. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rollins, Mary Godwin is our economic development director. She's usually at the meetings. All right. We need to get approval of August minutes.
Lord, we approve August minutes.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Gillard?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Heaney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, everyone should have a copy of the financials. We need to get approval of those.
Mr. Mayor, Patricia Robinson, we need the approval of August 20, 25, February 25.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Gillard?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Heaney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
All right, we had no chamber report, and we have no economic development report. Any police, any police reports?
As of right now, there's not a whole lot going on. Made couple of felony arrests, but nothing too serious right at the moment. So we're steadily moving on. Our girls at the night, seeing them there, making a DWI traffic stops. And it's got to the point where you don't even see anybody driving tonight anymore because... We're steadily going on the new vehicles that we've got. They're working great. Still very thankful for those. Everything's going good right now. We've got our fully staff, got one in the academy that's about to, I mean, she's on her third, Thursday week, I believe. No, actually, this is fourth week, it's Monday. But she's on her fourth week, so we're doing real good.
All right, thank you, Casey. The girl at the academy, wasn't she voted squad leader too?
Oh, yes, she was voted squad leader.
That's our first squad leader in a long time.
Well, yeah, Brad, he was squad leader as well. But yeah, she's the only female squad leader up there right now. And she even made the comment, it was funny, before she went, that she was gonna keep her head down and not be known.
All right. Tonight, we have some visitors with us. You'll see them at the Depot Museum, and you'll see them all over town, and you'll see them out at the Battlefields. And that's Mr. Paul Rigel and Mr. Jamie Simmons. We're gonna ask them to come approach the table. They're gonna talk to us tonight. They passed out some information, too.
Hello. I've met several of you, but not all of you. I'm Jamie Simmons, and I'm the director of the Depot Museum. And I know you all know Paul Rigel, our board president. We're coming today to propose a visitor center to be located in the Depot Museum. And the information I passed out earlier has a lot of detail, as well as statistics and numbers. But I'm just gonna, I know we don't have tons of time, so I'm just going to touch a little bit on the economic impact of tourism in Arkansas first. And again, there are more statistics in your information there, but I want to point out that last year, there were $10.3 billion spent in Arkansas by visitors. And we want, we want a piece of that pie here in Prescott. And now, that's the statewide impact. The county impact, this report is from the Arkansas Department of Parks Tourism and Heritage. Once a year, they do a study on the economic impact of tourism in Arkansas, and they break it down by counties as well as cities. And I do want to point out that I've got some information there for not only Nevada County, but Hempstead and Clark Counties are two closest neighbors along the I-30 corridor, as well as the Highway 67 corridor. And Hempstead County, last year in spending, there were, there was twice, over twice as much spending in Hempstead County than Nevada County. In Clark County, it was close to four times the amount that was spent here in Nevada County. And the difference, now, both Arkadelphia and Hope are larger towns, but the biggest difference, in my opinion, is the fact that they both have visitor centers. And as far as creating that visitor center in the depot, museums are a natural place for people to stop and ask for information. I've been in the museum field for well over 30 years now, and that's always been my experience. People look for places they feel comfortable to stop and ask for information if there's not already a visitor center. And that happens at the depot. And we're already right on 67, so it's also a convenient rest stop for a lot of people. We're one of only two facilities that have free public restrooms. The library and the depot are those two facilities. So for people who don't want to stop at the rest stops, at Love's or the TA Travel Stop, we're the other option. And so we provide that as well. And Hope, I want to point out, their visitor center is also in their Depot Museum. So we already know that that formula works as well. And that's the same for Arkadelphia. Their Depot Museum is a working, still an Amtrak station. So again, all of that combined together. So that's the why of why we think we should be the visitor center. And again, those statistics, I think, kind of speak for themselves. We can get more dollars spent here in Nevada County if we are able to promote what we do here, what we have here, the attractions, not just the attractions, the businesses as well. So working with the Chamber of Commerce to effectively target tourists coming down I-30 and Highway 67, coming up 371, those traveling to White Oak State Park. We're surrounded by all of these tourist destinations that are well-established. We're within an hour's drive of many destinations that people plan for when they come to Arkansas. So why not stop here and spend their money as well? And of course, I'm gonna let Paul kind of talk about what the, what we've done out at the battlefield. And we're on the edge of that battlefield, becoming something that is listed in the state guides and that sort of thing, along the same level as the state park. So again, we're creating a destination here in Nevada County.
If anybody's been by the Prairie Deanne Battlefield out there off the 46, if you stop in, you'll see that there's a lot of differences. The porta potties are actually open now and functioning and facilitated. So we've got that done this week. We've got picnic tables set up, we're clearing it off, and it looks a lot better when people pull in there. We got the first three ponds where people can walk in and go fishing. So, you know, it's there, and people are showing up. Jamie had a counter put on QR code to where they can take pictures as they walk through the gate. And the amount of visitors that we've had has just been unbelievable. But they go to Old Washington, and Old Washington refers them over here, and they'll come over here, and then they want to know where Evans Ferry. I said, "We don't have Evans Ferry yet." It's not opened up. It's down in the bottoms. But we tell them where it's at.
Well, and the, also out at Prairie, we have more walking trails, which can also be bicycle trails. So we're working on that aspect as well. So it's not just visitors who can take advantage of this, it's the whole community. It's a public space for everyone. And you can't drive into the prairie every time, but there is a walk-through, which is never locked, so you can go out there at any time. And it does include historical information, as well as just being a natural spot. You know, it is a natural prairie. We have about 800 acres of the larger Prairie Deanne that was part of the battle site. But it's also, you know, an inland prairie that is not common in Arkansas. There aren't that many, and that are still in existence, I should say. So it's also got that hook, you know, outdoor tourism. I think the numbers for 2024, it ended up being 2.5% of the total GDP, which surpassed farming in Arkansas.
Eddie Daniels been working on the walking trails. And he's got some very nice, just natural trails that walk around and go through the pond. There's about a half a mile trek. And then he's got one that goes about two and a half miles. It's pretty well maintained right now.
And the wildlife that you can see when you go out there is amazing.
Deer, you name it, it's out there. And we've got it. And Eddie's really put a lot of time into maintaining the trails because he feels like that's the best way. But a lot of the people that we see stopping in, the people with vehicles that's got dogs, that they, they want to walk their dogs, they don't have any place to walk them. So they'll stop in there, and they'll walk out on the prairie. We never knew this was here. There you go.
Well, you do. And another aspect of that, from the natural tourism part of it, the outdoors aspect, there's a field that is covered with butterflies once a year. When the monarch butterflies are migrating, they stop at Prairie Deanne. And there are people who track that. And they plan trips around following things like migratory birds and butterflies and things like that. So again, from that aspect, not just historical and, you know, fishing and outdoor sports, but also that part of it as well. So all of that together, I think, between Paul and I, we have, although, you know, it's not our specific professions, we have a lot of experience with tourism and interacting with tourists and promoting our sites. So, you know, the visitor center would be not just our sites, but the entire community, the entire county, what there is to do here. And providing that information, providing guidance for other things to do in the region, being a waypoint is, I think, would be our first hook. That would be our first draw. And then once we get them to stop in Prescott, you know, people love to look around. They will shop, they will eat at our restaurants, they will visit other things in the county because we will have told them about that. You know, we'll provide maps and all sorts of things. We already, the state provides free maps, free resource material. I already get that at the depot. And, but there are some additional materials that we could also get access to to pass out if we were a visitor center.
And that will also help bring business in, restaurants, hotels. That's really could have a big impact on Prescott. It's Love's and Neighbor Lee's just as coming in. I know we lost Casa Carlos, but there'll be other opportunities.
Did you say, did you say you could fish out there anytime? Before you had to have license to get out there and fish?
Well, it's private property, so, yeah. And there's a, there's a walk-through. You can't drive out to the ponds, but two of the ponds are right up front, so you can't miss it.
That little wooden section there is a parking lot. Got a walk-through gate on it, you can get in there. The ponds aren't an eighth of a mile out there.
Yeah.
It's right there by it. The first one's kind of a, now, let me warn you, the first pond's got small fish in it. The second and the third, they got some nice, nice tan-sized hybrid in it.
The third one's a little bit of a hike, but it's worth it.
Can I add you something?
Yes, sir.
I've always had a concern, but I, I, I always, it's hard to deal with. But I was looking at something, I can't remember what county that was. But, you know, we got another spot that we need to look at. You all and the tourist guy, that old iron bridge out there.
Yes.
And I saw what the state helped out, what was?
Salem, Saleen.
Okay, they helped them put, that old iron bridge, that we did it. I wish we could get that in, that could tie into our tourist.
One of the people that donated to that, donated property at Prairie, is also working with us. And he's donated quite a bit of money already.
And the iron bridge is already on the National Register, which makes it eligible for assistance as well. And there are also grants, state grants, that are geared towards, from the Department of Transportation, that are geared towards, again, you know, creating public spaces that appeal to local community as well as tourists. And that might be part of how we do something with it. But we would need a plan first, but I think their resources exist for us to be able to do something with the iron bridge.
The Old River Bridge was constructed in 1905, and it was part of the original Bankhead Highway. Whenever it first started, there was a Ford there where people used to drive back and cross.
And I was out there a couple of months ago as part of my leadership Nevada County class, and it's in, it's in a little rough shape right now. But it's, it's not beyond repair. I've seen worse that was repaired afterwards. And of course, being an iron bridge, it's got good bones. So I do think that that's something that could be developed, but we do need to like come up with a plan, and then we could start accessing the resources that are available.
They were able to use 90% of the bridge from Saleen County. They had it sent to Chicago and had it tested and reinforced, and then sent it back. But they were able to reuse 90% of the metal that was on it. It was, I think, eight years that they'd worked on it. But it looks really good. I've been to it.
How would we go about, like you said, doing a plan? You need to have a committee, or how you go about doing it?
I think one thing we could start with is potentially, and we could potentially get a planning grant for this part, bring in the folks from Saleen County who redid their bridge and kind of show them what we have and brainstorm some ideas. And listen to their experience with, you know, their process. And then I think we could come up with a plan at that point, you know. I mean, I've heard lots of stories about the old bridge after it was closed being used for picnics and all sorts of things. I mean, it could be a destination in and of itself. But I do think that, you know, if we talk to people who've already been through that process with a similar project and get some feedback, I think we could develop a plan based on that, or at least get started with brainstorming something.
The only problem that we'd have with getting it open now is it's reverted back to private land on the Oklahoma side. The Wingfields has got it. We might be able to talk to them and access it. But whenever they close that road down, the state no longer want anything to do with it. So it used to be a county road. We'd have to get into talks with them in order to be able to open it back up.
The question is, can they own, do they own part of the river? Or, I mean, wouldn't that be accessible?
The bridge, the bridge and its existence right there isn't enough to preserve it. And once, if we decide to work on the bridge, they can reopen that road. The only problem that we had with it right now, with the property that we own at Evans Ferry and at the bridge too, is vandalism. I mean, people go down there on their four-wheelers. They were tearing farmer's fields up. That's the reason they closed the road.
Well, and that is a case for developing it into a public site that allows, you know, the potential for creating a system of oversight for it. But again, you know, this is just like the beginning of an idea, but I do think that we could potentially get a planning grant to bring people in and look at the bridge and help us formulate that idea.
On Facebook, they do have a Friends of the Old River Bridge site that you can get on there and look up information that people's been trying to get done for quite a while. But nobody's really gotten involved in it, so.
I think part of that is that they do need a direction. You know, if we come up with a plan, I think we will have enough people helping us try and implement that plan.
There's a lot of people that's interested.
I don't think having volunteers is going to be an issue once we have a plan in place. I just think they need more direction.
But I definitely do think that's, that's a good idea.
Do we, let's give it again. Do we have to approve for you to do a visit to the center? What are we involved with?
Well, we're asking the city to help us fund that. We receive a line item, we're a line item on the city budget already. And we receive enough to keep the depot open three days a week. And we're very grateful for that, by the way. That pays me to be part-time, and that also pays our operational costs. I also, I started here in July of 2023, and I applied for grants for programming and extra things. And I have been able to get those grants every year for advertising, things like that. So we've been able to expand our programming based on that. But if we take over the job of a visitor center, we need to be open more than three days a week, or it defeats the purpose.
At least six days.
Yes, and so we're asking for additional resources to make it possible for me to be full-time so that we can have the visitor center open five days a week, potentially hire another part-time person so that we can be open six days a week. The, obviously, the longer we're open, the better it is. You know, right now, the depot's open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday because in my experience, that's when most travelers are out traveling. But we miss a lot of people on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. There are retirees who travel constantly. That's a big part of the heritage tourism that we spoke about, are retirees. And they're, they're not locked into weekend travel, like those with jobs or those with families. So we're missing a lot of people because we're not open long enough.
We also have genealogy that the library's taken over because Teresa does a real good job on that. And she's got a genealogical library that people can go in up there and sit down with. But we could get volunteers to go up there. And I know there's people that would volunteer for that just to do genealogy of them, which is pretty nice.
How much I noticed when you gave us a financial report for Hempstead and Clark?
Yes.
It's listed as, how much do the county pay?
The...
It's listed as county fund.
Oh, it's county fund?
Oh, now, the county impact...
I think she's asking how much?
How much does Nevada County pay?
Nevada County has not assisted in two years.
Right. Nevada County is not helping.
Not assisted in two years. Since Mike Godwin took office, we received nothing.
That's a problem. That's a problem. It's a county, it's a county project.
Right.
I think we should, I think we should assist the county and help it us be the best we could be for tourism because money coming into Prescott comes into Nevada County.
Correct, correct.
So no free passes here.
Right.
Everybody got to participate.
Mary Godwin didn't know if it was legal to help us out. So he just kind of said no to any assistance on travel or anything else lately, so.
Okay, now, give me that again, and I want to make sure I hear that correctly.
He didn't know if it was legal to help the prairie out because, I mean, it's a battlefield, but it wasn't county property. So he's saying that we weren't eligible to receive county funds or county assistance due to that not being part of the county government.
So you wanted to present this to the court?
No, I haven't presented it to the court, just tried to talk to him. He shut it down pretty quick. He closed it down quick. Maybe he'll change his mind then.
And in terms of a visitor center... And in terms of a visitor center, we're really proposing Prescott Visitor Center. And in terms of a visitor center, we're really proposing a Prescott Visitor Center because where, where would people stop? We want people to stop here. And of course, part of a visitor center is you do tell them what's in your area. You do tell them what's in the county and the surrounding counties. You're informational, you know. We would provide those brochures and the handouts, the information, the maps, everything that they need. But we want to promote them stopping in Prescott specifically because that's where we are. And this is the natural place to stop because we're both, we're on those highways and the interstate. And so it would be the Prescott Visitor Center, even though it would, you know, it does overlap with providing information for the whole county. And we are promoting the whole county, but I don't want to...
We've had the discussion before about changing the name of the depot to the Prescott Depot Museum. But it's been Nevada County Museum for, ever since it's been open, since Mr. Teeter started it. So it would be kind of difficult to change because of the 503(c) status that we have. I mean, it could be done.
How are they doing in Hope? Does Hope and Hempstead work together?
Yes.
Does Clark County, does Clark County and Arkadelphia work together?
Now, I have to say, the visitor center in Clark County is actually an Arkadelphia Visitor Center. And it's similar to our situation in that, you know, that's the place people stop. That's where the two colleges are, and that's the place where the people stop. Now, with Hope, it's the Hope Visitor Center. And the museum itself is run by the city. So it, and again, they promote the whole county, but they've got a state park facility right behind them and the Clinton birthplace right next to them. So they're focused mainly on Hope. And it was originally co-hosted by their Chamber of Commerce. So it was Chamber of Commerce and the museum presenting this visitor center in their train depot. So it's, it's a little bit different from what we'd had... So it's a little bit different from what we have here, but I think it's more similar in the fact that it's specifically a Hope Visitor Center. And Arkadelphia is the same. It's the, they promote Arkadelphia first, and then also the surrounding area, which is Clark County.
The tax revenue, tax revenue that comes to Prescott comes to Nevada County. They get just as much benefit as... It's Nevada County Museum and Prescott is more than happy to help, to be the best it can be. And the county should be too. You can't speak for the county without, I'm not understanding. I'm not understanding why they're not involved.
Yeah, we agree on that point.
I don't mean, I don't mean that.
You know I'm gonna catch it for that.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be presented to the court also.
It does.
Bring revenue in to our communities. Something we all should look at, the county and the city.
Back to what he's saying also, you look at Nevada County, we're looking at the good of the whole county, even though it might be Prescott. But what's Prescott get? If we get funds, we help us out all we can. And county has stuff that we have them with. So this is something not just for Prescott, it's for the county, the good of the county. And that's what we need to push, the whole good of the county. If this is gonna be good for the county, put a little money in it and help. It's not just, even though we said Prescott, and you have a reason for saying Prescott, because the center is right in Prescott.
Right.
And so I'm saying that if we have to, somehow, then we can go to the court and talk to the...
Man, I will. But, can you help us, can you help us out a little bit with this? You've been around a long time, and I'm saying, if we're talking about the museum, and we're trying to see if you know anything about why the county...
I don't have any idea. There is no, I don't believe that there's an interlocal agreement at all. This with the Nevada County.
But we ought to prove the best we can be, we're gonna have to be like Hope. So our county and the city have to work together.
Well, Nevada County, up until a couple of years ago, they participated. We got with Terry, we got with Mark Glass at the time, and we sat down at the Economic Development Center. They agreed to give us so much gravel to finish the road. Well, that was five years ago, probably still not finished. You know, it's just a thing, whenever things change, political, political change, that's how fast it can go.
Right.
But yes, it is, Nevada County's got a lot to offer. It really does. We've got old buildings all over the county that we could bring in here, that we could get put in for visitor's center out the interstate. And I've recently talked to an architect firm out of Missouri about doing that, but that's a project and a big fundraiser. I really don't want to touch it just yet. That's gonna be millions of dollars. So until we get the infrastructure down, we're kind of a standstill. And part of the infrastructure, we have been trying to be more self-sustaining in everything that we do. We've been trying to raise funds. We do extensive drives on that as far as asking people for help. And you'd be surprised at how many people out of Texas and Northern Arkansas and Louisiana come up here and actually participate and help produce some funds to produce stuff.
Yeah, the prairie is starting to gain recognition further afield. A lot of that has to do with the connection as a battlefield, the reenactments, the rendezvous. But there's the potential beyond that as well. We can connect with those tourists that are looking for outdoor destinations. They're looking for scenic destinations. The prairie falls right into that as well. I mean, we've got an amazing asset out there, and we're beginning to leverage it properly. And so it's beginning to get on people's radars when they're planning their trips and they're coming along I-30. We still have a ways to go for it to be something that has the recognition of, say, like Murfreesboro or something like that, or the surrounding points of interest. But more and more people are specifically stopping here to see that, so.
How much fun would you have it man for this?
Not...
We didn't have it on here? We were asking for another 25,000. But that's something, I mean, that would be able to keep the depot open for six days a week. I think that's what we...
Six days a week.
I agree with that.
And that would be regular nine to five hours, so full day.
And we could also approach the court about it too, and see if they've changed their, had a change of heart lately.
That'd be my suggestion, and see what they're gonna come up with. Then bring it back and present what they see.
I think if anyone goes out there and tours it, they'll be pretty interested in it. They've got a lot of good things going on, especially if you like outdoors and being outside.
I'd be glad to check it out.
I think we need to.
We've got picnic tables and porta-potties out there, so if people want to go out and picnic, they can do it. There's been several families that we've found out there that's just driven in, got locked in by accident. Well, we put signs up saying authorized vehicles when we're working on them. And they drive in there and they decide to go on a tour on their own, and they get locked in.
Yeah, we're not allowing that yet because we're still working on some of the roads to be appropriate for vehicles. But you can visit there at any time, walk in.
Or if somebody wants a tour of it, I'll be glad to go out there with them, myself, Eddie Daniels even want.
You need to take advantage of that because he will take you through the entire prairie site, and it's very interesting.
You haven't invited the court, you haven't too?
We haven't.
They might be, they might be.
I think so. They need to organize a court and invite them.
Y'all may have a good day, that should be available for y'all.
I can't, I'm old, I don't want to go.
I can't go, not a morning thing. Yeah, we want a prairie.
Well, I tell you what, we're gonna have two events out there next month. We're gonna have Civil Reenactment at the very last weekend, and that's gonna be in partnership with Old Washington. And we'll have some people count out there then. That would be a good time to see it because you get to see how these people live. And then the week before that, we're gonna have a mountain man run it. And from nine to... Nine to three, the prairie will be open for people to come in and just regular close. And we can walk you around or show you the whole place in too.
We're gonna take a tour, Ross.
When is that?
That's gonna be on the 25th of October. From 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And if y'all happen to have any kids that's like five years old to seven and eight, we're gonna have some activities for them, pumpkins, face painting, and fire starting and other stuff. If you don't want the kids to start fires, you just need to let us know because they do take advantage of it. But they make it with steel and tin.
Thank you for letting us present.
It's coming along a lot better. And I wanted to say thank you for everything that y'all have done. The city's really been a big contributor and they helped a lot.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Also, they're gonna have at the National Guard on Reed Thursday from five to eight, five to seven.
Five to seven.
Five to seven, Scott Daniel Razorback Exhibition, exhibit on his artwork.
No favor.
Eddie Daniels' dad. All right, thank you, Paul, thank you, Jamie. Appreciate y'all's effort out there. Y'all have really put in effort. I got to go out there a couple of times lately, and it's amazing what they're doing with very little money. So, it's impressive. Okay, we got any other calls? Anyone got any announcements? We got a meeting coming up, anything?
I do. Four seven, this month. I want our community to be...
Four seven.
Four seven, this month.
Twenty-seven?
I'd like us to welcome to our community Champ Tiffany Moody, the new owners of our local running back. We're excited to have her. Please give her the support that's been given to me all these years. I'd like to thank the community for all the support they give. It's very much appreciated, so please continue with the movies.
Okay, is that Tiffany, lady named Brian? Tiffany Brian?
She work there.
Oh, yeah?
She work down there at T, Dr. T.
No, he said, well, she's from, I said she's from her.
Yeah. They are, they are, they've got a new big house. This is where she, they came back. And we also have some vice board. We're trying to let this play look like it's life. We hope to get some more business coming.
Mayor, how are we on our drainage problem? You know, any more infection on that?
Engineers come a couple of times, and they're still working on all that. That's about to lay this on the hill. Nothing to bring to the council yet. They got all the names and addresses, who's involved, working on the public levels that we have to qualify for grant money or such.
You got most of your names?
We got them all now. I think it's sixty-four different houses involved. So that'll be good, once it happens. So we're seeing back anything else. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn? Have a good evening.